Test this, is that what you said?
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, let's do it.
Excellent. I will call this work session of the Orem City Planning Commission to order at four thirty eight PM on September seventeenth, twenty twenty five in the Orem City Council Chambers. We will, just for clarifications, will not be having a regular meeting this evening. And we will just be having a work session. And we have four of us, so we have quorum, so we will get started. Great.
All right. We're continuing. Land use, the elements, the classifications that we kind of left off our discussion last time, discussing land use classifications. And then we'll, as it was on the work session agenda, just kind of loop together land use and then economic as element, we'll do a map discussion at the end. Where we're gonna start with. We'll kind of take a break from this classifications. And then at the end, we'll have some maps, Matt's printing them right now. And and we can talk about some more classification, more just on the maps. So. We talked about this quite a bit last time, so we've discussed, we discussed, so this is staff's kind of interpretation of some of what we talked about. So residential last class, land use classifications update, updates. Kind of two different categories, neighborhood residential. And that's kind of three different subcategories. Rural neighborhood residential, zero to three units gross per gross acre or twenty to R twelve. Similar kind of gross acreage below neighborhood residential, single family, R eight, R seven, five, R six, R six, five, R six, the existing zoning. And then also we've added some different typologies of homes. Attached twin homes and twin townhomes. And then transitional residential, attached townhomes, twin homes, that should have been attached to townhomes above, I apologize. And then we kind of took that multifamily concept and put it as the second classification. Multifamily residential, neighborhood multifamily, townhomes, twinhomes, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, stacked units. Transitional multifamily, townhomes, cottage courts, small scale apartment buildings. And then you have mid-rise multifamily and high-rise multifamily. So we, we want to just kind of put this out there for a discussion today. And see if this is kind of a direction that's trending that we're with artists, previous discussions with the commission and, and kind of briefly, because we're, we're here as long as you guys want to be, I guess, tonight, just kidding. We want to make sure we keep this still under a timeframe, but for, we still have lots of classifications to discuss, so I think we can, you know, kind of go all that you kind of got the discussion and I mean, if there's any questions right now.
Thank you. Okay. Begin, we can talk, this is just, this is a work session, this is, jump in, let's start talking.
So based on, I'm trying to, you know, my memory is a little faulty always, but we talked about not duplicating classifications last time, so the attached twin homes, townhomes in two different spaces. Seems off. Based on that discussion, and I don't think stacked units belongs in a neighborhood, anything.
Well, I, that's, that's, that's fine, I was, was more just kind of, we're taking type, typologies homes. And saying that in different areas, they could fit. If you're wanting to scratch that off, we could say, yeah, scratch it off.
Yeah, I think that's what my comment was, is I didn't think it fit in a neighborhood, maybe in a transitional
multifamily.
Or the mid-rise multifamily, high-rise type thing, but not in the neighborhood multifamily. Was my point, I, I didn't think the stacked units would fit into that, I totally see having smaller things like townhomes and fourplexes. In a standard neighborhood here and there.
For the, okay.
You know, but the stacked units that, that kind of takes away from the whole neighborhood.
What is a stacked unit, exactly?
Can we get a definition of that, please?
What do you view as a stacked unit? I know what I think when I
Multi-story, like twelve units.
So units stacked on top of each other, so a townhouse, while it might be two or three stories even, is not a stacked unit, right? A townhouse would be an attached side by side, but a fourplex could be considered a stacked unit, though, in that, in that sense, because there might be, you know, those standard old four squares where there's two units on the bottom, two up top. And that since that might be a stacked unit, it just depends on how you kind of
I don't put them there myself because of the architecture, the style, but
Yeah.
Are you also talking about the type of homes where you enter one and then you split up and you can go to
Stacked flats, yeah, those are, those are generally called stacked flats, and that would, that would be a stacked unit technically too. So maybe the term isn't one that we want.
From one perspective, that was included in that because of it matches a similar typology of duplexes and triplexes, sure, those are traditionally maybe side by side, but there are forms of tight home, types of home housing that are that, it's also scale, you know, like Mike, I think you're, you're, you're nailing down like, yeah, and what scale appropriateness is for a neighborhood, I would also say we are lacking a definition of a neighborhood. If we're going to be calling this neighborhood residential, we also have to maybe define that a little bit more fine grained. So that we can fine tune this classification. I, we just kind of took neighborhood residential and ran with it because it was kind of like, I feel like it fits some of the discussion we were talking about. And so, but I think that also kind of has, some people think, oh, this is one type of neighborhood, there's other, other type of neighborhoods that have, you know, lots of different typologies of home housing in them versus a traditional s- single family subdivision, so.
Yeah, I'm not, and I don't want to downplay that just because you live in a, an apartment complex, that it's not, can't be a neighborhood, it's, it's just more about density and permanence. And you get too much of apartments in a certain area and it, and you do kind of lose the neighborhood because it's now, it's more like a hotel almost, because people, they don't stay there for twenty years, they don't stay there, you know. It's a lot more transient, I guess, is maybe the word I was looking for, and so that's why I'm talking about scale. You know, but I, I, I think it's very pertinent to have these kind of things within a standard residential area. I think it's important to have it distributed across that.
Yeah, it's why I don't actually like the, the phrase transitional residential, which is the same thing as attached, attached townhomes and twinhomes. I think that transitional residential really is our multifamily residential, our multifamily neighborhood, and I think that I, I think when it's neighborhood residential and we, I do like the neighborhood thing, because I think even when we're talking about our multifamily, they are neighborhoods, we need to see them as neighborhoods, not as transition, not as superfluous, but as neighborhoods too. I know, that's not what you're saying, but I'm just saying that for, as we start looking through here, that's my opinion, is that I think we get rid of transitional and just make it part of the multifamily neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's why I tried to clear, I didn't want to make it sound like it was downplaying people who live in that space, it just. But you know, I, I lived in Amron. Just before we live in the house we are, and we had a lot, we had a lot more transitional people. So it was hard to have a permanence to our neighborhood because, well, so and so ran that, you know, that activity group or this, they just moved out. Well, he's gonna, nobody knows he's gonna do it yet, so it just, there is often a little bit of shift when you don't have enough houses that you have more of a permanence, so.
Okay, we'll take some notes from your feedback. Just a contextual, the reason I added transitional was, we look at a map, there might be spaces where there is, it doesn't fit either into neighborhood or multifamily. And maybe through the map discussion, we can discuss that and explore what that is. But, but we'll, we'll scratch that off and, and then we'll move. Maybe we can further define what these are. Like the old plan has, you know, definitions for the different types of, we can get there eventually, this is more just to start the discussion.
I think this is a, a really good start on it because I think it's clear. I mean, I think if anyone opened it and looked at this, I don't know if we really need super long definitions of these, I mean, we need some, obviously, but like, that is probably what's useful, okay, what does this mean, what does this mean? And I think with transitional residential, I don't disagree in a planning sense that we need transitional stuff, but in terms of how we define it and how we look at it in our community, I think we need to be finding ways of making it consistent with being part of our city. And not just, oh, you're just here because you're buffering us between stage street and, so.
Any other feedback, questions about the residential at this point?
Anything, Jerry, Jason?
I'll move on to commercial. Commercial, we have the existing classifications, I don't, we think we really had a chance or time to dive in last time more into discussing this specifically, but we have the existing professional services, community commercial, regional commercial, we've talked a little bit about regional commercial and some of the overlap between each of these categories existing, we've discussed neighborhood commercial, also had notes for a small business, I wasn't sure if that was a classification versus a type of zoning, I think some of our discussions have kind of also focused on maybe a type of zone in the future, we wanted to talk about, so this is kind of what, what I wanted to put up here today to continue that discussion about commercial.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you're reading.
Oh, yeah, I don't think we had this discussion, community commercial type things, we definitely didn't want a C two.
Yeah, I think, isn't this what it is currently? Yeah, this is straight up what's in the, which is in our current general plan, so.
Yeah.
It's how we want to redo it.
Yeah, I, we do want that. Those notes we talked about is, what did we call it, I don't remember what we called it.
Yeah, we we've talked about neighborhood commercial, adding that one.
Yes.
I think the question is, just to start discussion, let's just start with professional services and work down, what do we want? Do we like the professional services as a classification? What goes into professional services? I'm going to ask what the difference between C one, commercial, non-retail is versus professional services? See, I think this is part of our problem is we don't, like, we don't even know what the difference between some of these are.
Well, and some of them just, they're almost identical.
Yeah.
They really should have, like, C two, C three really should have a lot more differentiation.
Absolutely.
Other than just height restrictions and bounding and.
If I may, if I remember from last time, we kind of, I think, had a few minutes to talk about neighborhood commercial. And that was very long. But I think if you've look at from our discussions relating to maybe residential as well, as we look around the city and saying, hey, where, where are some areas, these existing areas that maybe the existing classification doesn't seem to really fit, or the future classification typology that we want there maybe has more finite restrict, you know, allowances in terms of zoning there. And then that can be how we move forward through this process of thinking about, oh, here's an adjustment to, you know, community commercial where it is existing, maybe some of that transitions to this new neighborhood commercial scale type of classification. And then you can maneuver some of the other ones around as well, I'm just throwing out some ideas.
I'm gonna throw one out, why is Business Park not part of professional services? And that's I, I think we, that's, I, I keep coming back to that, but just somewhere to start the conversation in the sense that the basis of it, what does professional services mean, like, what's it supposed to cover, I'm trying to find it near real quick.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that maybe it might be helpful to look at the land use, where we have professional services categorized.
Yeah.
If that doesn't make sense anymore, there's no reason to keep it. And why Business Park is not one of the zones that
Yeah, I was looking here, so this is professional service, the professional service classification is established as a low impact professional office use for buffering between collector or arterial roads and residential developments, non-retail professional and service service uses characterized as classification.
So that reads to me like you should think of professional services as a land use category that is supposed to create sort of low impact office areas. A strip mall full of dentists and optometrists, et cetera. And, and then you, you know, you wind up with massage therapy and whatever else in this kind of an area. So sort of suburban strip, small scale office. I don't know that the class, I don't know where the classification is used on our map right now. And those are the kinds of things that if we're not utilizing it, maybe we don't need it. I don't know, what are your thoughts about that kind of classification? Is that needed somewhere, is that something we want? That it kind of fills the same bill as, as limiting one of the commercial zones like C two, we're saying limiting, limiting scale in that kind of a zone, same as we're transitioning from a corridor-like state street out toward the neighborhoods, we don't want six-story office towers, so we have limits to that in a, in a different kind of zone, don't necessarily need professional services, we have it all over. Is it down by the, where is that? That's by the campus.
That's the campus, UVU is.
I'm not sure how that makes sense, if somebody else can make sense of why that's
What, UVU's labeled professional services? Probably because they needed to put it somewhere.
And it's maybe, I, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
The that's the general plan, right?
Is this our, yeah, this
Yes, it's general plant category. It's not a, it's not a category that makes a lot of sense to me, especially the where it's mapped.
Yeah.
If we're looking at using, if we're looking at, at a university land use category instead, there are a couple other instances of it. Looks like, is there anything up north for the north? Yeah, there you go, up by the canyon.
And Tecany, Tecany, which half of that's gone now, so.
And, and the other half of it's in PD zoning, not in professional.
Yeah.
So it hasn't really been, I don't know about the area, I don't know the area well enough to know, and I'm pointing up at a screen behind you all, so I apologize. The area at the mouth of the canyon, or near the mouth of the canyon, I don't know that area real well, I'm not sure there's some other category that fits that better, that area. I would, I would venture to say that around the school, in my opinion, around the, around the university, we have other things that
Power. It was power, we had hydroelectric on the one side.
On the north, yeah.
They had the substation on the, the north, south side of the road.
And then you have the
And now you've got Zachware in there as well.
Okay.
But that's probably why they labeled it, that was all hydroelectric and substation for power.
But isn't some of that supposed to be developed? I mean, like, we approved something like three years ago with Provo on that border.
On that fifteen fifty east is
I think Provo's developed theirs, I think Provo's had a lot of new construction in that location.
So.
Most of that's still pretty open.
Oh, and then we have a chunk along Eighth North. That's professional services.
Is that that office complex?
Yeah, right there by. Yeah. Apartments, it's always the
Oh, that's the insurance. James Journal House.
That's interesting that that one block is density residential and it's two office buildings. Huh, you can see what happens with time. Okay. So professional services, thoughts, opinions?
Professional, it's an odd title.
It's an odd title.
To group all the professional services. And it's supposed to be, what is it, what was it that it was supposed to encompass again?
Low impact professional office use for buffering between collector or arterial roads and residential development. Which it doesn't do any of that. I mean, what we have right now on the map, obviously, we can change that.
Yeah.
But the question is
Well, I guess it would be arterial.
Yeah. But I guess the question is
No, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
No. From what I'm noticing is, where it's on is professional service, it isn't next to residential neighborhoods and the low impact is necessary instead of having a commercial
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Areas. So, I mean, I live by three of those locations that one had the elongated piece with half of the empty property with the church owns. And now it became a staging, uh, location for the new pipeline going in. Same thing for the award perfect building. And then the other side, um, by, uh, by Provo, it makes sense for it. And it does, it does kind of buffer from residential to busy roads and, and, and they are all low impact in there from our neighborhood. They're super low impact. So we don't feel tons of traffic. So I, I think they're necessary, especially where there are. Are we thinking of switching it to something else or?
Calling it something else or figuring out what other things should be in that designation.
Term that's not actually in the code as anything, it's just.
Not in the code as anything.
Oh, I mean, cause C two, uh, like the one right next to Harman's is C two.
Yeah, and it was, it was residential high density at some point.
Yeah, so it, it's just, uh, it's a catchall term for different things and.
This is for, for clarity sake.
Yeah.
We, I mean, and he said low, uh, low impact?
Yeah, it does say low impact professional office use, which I think we agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you just name it low impact for office use. It, it is low impact. And I'd like it to stay low impact and not change, especially where it buffers the neighborhood from busy roads and busy commercial entities. If we call it low impact and define what, what businesses go on low impact, just like it does in the sheet here in, uh, zones. I mean, I don't see that in the, in the zones, but, um, in the commercial industrial, but.
It's a good discussion and to the extent that, um, so let me, let me pivot a little bit because it makes, it makes some sense. Maybe to the extent that, and this is one of those times you want to remember that the way we use the general plan or the way we maybe ought to think about using a general plan. The two zones that it kind of encompasses currently are the professional office zone and those PD zones. So every time someone came in with a PD zone, like at the tech park or whatever, then we should have been or should be, if it comes in the future, looking at the general plan as a part of that zone change request or the development that comes in and saying, is this, this is supposed to be low impact regardless. So what you're proposing in your PD zone where you get to say, here's what we want to do. We measure that against that general plan designation and say it's, this is professional services, whether we rename it or not. This is professional services and the statements in the, in the zoning or in the, um, land use chapter say it should be low impact. So are the things that you're proposing going to be low?
Low impact and that may, maybe that allows. That allows for rezoning as well. If somebody wants to rezone some area into a low impact where it, it meets a criteria, it opens up some of the doors for rezon in a way that doesn't hurt the neighbor and.
Great. And so what we.
It allows for more businesses.
Another thing that we ought to do then maybe to that, to that point is look at our PO zone and make sure that because in PD zone, it's all on the table and we can say yes or no to how much intensity they're proposing in whatever development, right? But we ought to check the PO zone because that's one of the ones that's prescribed here and make sure that it's low impact enough to be contained in it, in a land use category that prescribes low impact.
Discuss this with me here. Maybe I would, I would rather to get away from PD completely and make it, make it the low impact zone. Just PD is no longer an option.
Yeah.
This is the parameters you have. If you want to get in, this is what you get because PD has allowed for a meal piece system that has caused a lot of issues.
Absolutely.
I, so could get away with PD.
I think so. I think we absolutely, we make sure every category that is gone because right now it's in every category.
Every category is in every category.
Well, I think PO actually only makes it into professional.
For the most, for the most part, C two and C three in every category except for ten feet somewhere.
And that's what we're trying to parse out here, right? How do we divide these up? How do we want to call these things so that when we go and actually change these codes or make proposal, I should say, break proposals to change these codes that we have context for it. And I think, and I want to bring up one principle that I think we kind of keep talking about. And maybe I want to see where you guys are all at is we, I mean, I know I do. I'd really like to see the general plan and the zoning actually ma- matched.
Yeah, I'd love to allow for redevelopment into some areas to be the low impact.
Yeah.
Office space, given that it's on good, um, on access roads and arterial places.
I agree.
Yeah, so that's, and then get away with the PD. The, the meal piece system that everybody gets anything if they bring a strong case or they know enough people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's like eight hundred north putting, not having things that are low impact. It's going to really cause chaos on the road. It's already congested and bad. So, you know, putting as many C twos down there is kind of causing even more chaos. So being thoughtful and making sure that, you know, the road doesn't continue to be more overloaded than it already is, is a good idea.
So can we go back to that screen and look at, yeah, thanks? So professional services, whatever we call it. Yes, PD would definitely be struck, struck from that. And then would you include business parks or are business parks, uh, a quarter acre lot size? I'm looking at what we have right now. Obviously all of this can be changed in the future by change of ordinance, but. I was gonna say, where's our BP? Sorry, we have to switch back and forth. Yeah, I mean, or what are we calling business park? What do we have that's business park? Stop with the P, we know it's PDs. I want to know if anyone's actually used the BP. Oh, right there.
Wait, that was, that was just listed as.
It was listed, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this is our current zoning, correct?
Yes.
So this is current zoning as opposed to our map.
If you look on the left, it shows which, which, um, layer I have active right now, I have zoning overlays. So just to show you, because when we're talking about BP, that is a zone. And then when we're talking about PO and community commercial CC, it's a, the classification. So, um, so I have to switch back to between two maps if we're, if we're going to talk quickly about them. I'll try to not do that fast, but since we were talking about zoning, I pulled up the zoning map just so you can see where the BP zones are. Since that's the zone in question we're discussing right now. And then, yeah, to your point.
Some of those POs were used.
That property up here, the canyon was PO, um, general plan.
General plan is professional services.
Sorry.
Professional services.
Yes, thank you. Excellent.
Which doesn't contain business park as a, as a prescribed zone, but that's what we've zoned that. So.
So there's some gaps.
Now you understand why we are confused. Yeah, I, I reiterate what I said before. I think what we have in the plan needs to reflect what's both in the future and on the ground. Their current zoning as well. I mean, not exactly, but I mean, the, the terms need to be.
And the campus is a business park.
Also, also in the professional services, land use category that does not prescribe business park. One of those things, but business park might be appropriate in that land use category, especially if we're striking the, the PD zones from it.
Also, it's, it's at the end of my list, but it's one of the new classifications we've discussed is university classification. And then subsequently, what kind of zoning classification would we change it from business park in this case? But we would change the land use classification to university. If we're going to consider that or not, that was one of the things we discussed.
So. So, but currently Business Park is actually in community commercial? Yeah, not professional. What do people think? Business park? Is that more a larger scale thing? Or do you think that's part of whatever we might call professional services?
Business park or what?
Is it part of professional? Do you think it should be part of professional services? Or do you think it should be part of whatever we change community commercials? It's like you need like each one and you just need to be like, do these go together? No, do these go together? This is kind of the idea we're going with. I mean, and we can take a step back because maybe we need to say, what is our, what is our goals? And not specifically what each of these categories are, but maybe what are our goals with business? What would we like to see on a broader sense? Business classifications that do what for warm? And you may ponder, it's okay. Jim?
Well, I just, uh, I'm a little bit befuddled. I mean, these are, the whole intent of this, I guess, is so we can accurately define groupings of, uh, zones that we want to, uh, what mesh together in some coherent fashion. And then, uh, I don't know that I have strong feelings one way or another, honestly, with this. I, I think Grant had a comment he was going to make.
Yeah, if I may, Madeline, I, I think, um, something to consider when you're in a general plan process is kind of like, it's a roadmap. We've talked about that before, but what's the timeline of that roadmap and that we're thinking ahead for? So it's not just, uh, we're setting a general plan, we're going to adopt it. And in two years, the development's going to come in and propose something different. But what's it also going to, we're also kind of looking at a longer ti- longer range timeline perspective per, uh, for what can we envision an area of the city being in 10 to 20 years?
So in doing that, are you being, uh, more proscriptive? That is with narrower definitions or with broader definitions?
That's, that's why I think what we're trying to figure out through this process is, is we're trying to say, okay, this is what we've had, uh, in our general plan now. And okay, how have, how have, how has that in the last seven years? Since that's when it was last updated in 2018. How has that in the last seven years? How has the city and that avoid the, the market and the development community responded to that? And on the ground as well, how, what are the, you know, what are things tangibly? We can walk in a neighborhood, we can walk and, uh, and go to a site and say, how does this feel? Does, what, does this respond to what our intent was? And then you can respond now and say, okay, like to what Mike was saying, yeah, some of these corridors, maybe, you know, you know what? This is pretty packed. It's really tight here. It's really tight here. It's difficult to get around here. Okay, just maybe now, now is the time to say, we reimagined this. But through this reimagining of what it is and has been, what does that become in 10 to 20 years? Uh, or so I'm just trying to think, hey, think, you know, not just two years ahead, but also subsequently 10 to 20 years ahead. Now, do we, are we going to do another general plan update between then probably?
Aren't we, aren't we required to do it periodically actually or not?
We're encouraged to.
Encouraged to.
The state hasn't, the state mandates, so we have one. Uh, but I know communities, I'm aware of communities who have had, um, one, the last one, major, last major general plan update, I think it was, um, I was talking with a colleague. Sandy City did an update in nineteen seventy nine. And their most recent comprehensive update, they did la- you know, the last five years and they adopted it last year. So they, they, they've done small updates along the way. But they never did a comprehensive, really robust process with the community with, you know, to, to really over envision and respond to that. But that's a lots of long period of time, right? And so just some thoughts as you think about this, specifically this, but also the other classifications, right? For corridors, I, I almost thought community commercial would be like corridor commercial because it's along mostly, uh, State Street corridor. And, um, you've got regional commercial along University Parkway. And then, but State Street is mostly community commercial. Maybe it's more, more of like a corridor commercial or, I don't know, just to, gonna throw that.
Does, uh, does Sandy City have different definitions than we have? I mean, you've spoken with them, have you compared?
I haven't compared nitty gritty, uh, because their, their document they showed me is like this thick. It's the printed document.
If we leave it too broad, then at some point you might get into trouble if someone wants to develop something that's not consistent with what we'd really like to have.
Potentially, but I think Jared shared this in the past too, is, is with, with our goals that we set in the general plan, we can say, yeah, here's our goals. And they can be pretty prescriptive. And then with, then within that framework, we can also then have additional measures in, in the zoning that we allow in that classification to also have some controls for what, what we feel is appropriate in a different part of the city, right?
So I guess, uh, uh, from a, a broad perspective, you know, you can, with one broad stroke of the brush, you can define things. But then as you get more granular, uh, then it becomes more of a challenge, I'm thinking. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the, that's the challenge that we have with an evolving organism in a way. Cities are kind of like that. They're going to evolve and change. And how do we respond to that as, as we want to kind of guide that, uh, of evolution of what's changing on the ground and what do we want to accept? And what do we want to also try to say, hey, this doesn't feel right, you know, here? That we don't like how this happened. We don't like this. We could respond that way and say, oh yeah, we need to make, make some adjustments. And I think this, that's what we're doing right now is we're saying, hey, yeah, we're responding, saying, you know, this doesn't feel right. We're, we're noticing some gaps in our maps and saying, oh yeah, that, that, that's a gap. Okay, this is our opportunity to say, yeah, let's, let's paint that stroke.
Yeah.
And say, yeah, that, this feels like it's going to be more better classified, defined, classified as this. And then like to their discussion we just had with, you know, low impact, right? Okay, where can we identify then on the map where there needs to be more low impact? That is currently maybe higher impact, um, to use that as an example.
We are the, uh, lead person in this whole effort. The one that's, uh, you know, providing the final drafting force with our review. But I would ask of you, are there the things that you've identified? Is there currently constituted that should be perhaps changed or?
Absolutely. Like I, like I was saying, sharing, I think it's been seven years and over that time you can say, you can receive how we can respond to what's on, what was mapped then. Obviously, conditions have changed, um, economically. You know, developments change, the, the, the circumstances for development are changed, have changed in certain, certain areas of the city, like there's, because of COVID for a period of time, there is class A office was soft, you know, softened, for example. And so you could say, okay, um, all of the development in Vineyard across the boundary of Geneva Road is building up. So that condition along Geneva Road has changed significantly since the last time we did this effort. And so, yeah, so there's, I would say that there's definitely areas that we can respond to by examining the existing situation and conditions and saying then, oh yeah, we, we can respond by making some updates and changes. And it's needed because that's, and that's why it's good for we, us, for the city and us to go through this process. I think periodically, however often, that's kind of up to the council and, and, um, to decide, right?
Now we're discussing what, uh, what the designations mean. Not necessarily where they would be applied, but what, what constitutes each designation? You talked about what corridor commercial?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I just kind of like, it's a long corridor. I don't know.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, I think we're still in the middle of, that's where we left off. Recently is in this discussion is what do you call it? I know I took a stab with the name, the, the residential ones.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that, I don't, I can't think, think of another one off the top of my head, but.
Jared, do you want to say something?
Two, two things, two things real quick. We are going to be at some point tonight, we are going to want to do, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken and correct, if I'm wrong, if we didn't get to this part. But I think we are going to do a little bit of a mapping exercise together. Um, and that'll give us a chance to, to kind of, to take some of this that is not completely cooked yet and see how that would.
Okay.
How we would apply that to a map if we're making changes to things. And that might give us a little better, um, picture of, of, of what some of these things would mean. If I could draw a circle around just the, um, I don't want to pretend I didn't say that. That sounds very corporate speak and I hate that. So, but if I could come back to, to, to Jim's, to Jim's questions, it's making me think about what we were talking about with professional services as a category. Remember as a land use category. One of the things that it does, as any land use category does, is prescribe certain zones. Land use right now, the, the zones prescribed by that land use as it stands on our books are professional office and, uh, PD zones. And we don't want to, we're trying not to lean into PD zones or getting away from those, the zone by cafeteria style. So if we're leaving just professional office, I, I would suggest the following. I think BP, that business park probably works in that zone or in. I think BP, that business park, probably works in that zone, or in that category as well, because business parks are not typically filled with tall buildings, they're, they're usually low rise, they're low impact, people come and go in the mornings and in the evening, and they're not, they're not hosting, you know, a lot of stuff. Even in, in business parks, even restaurants that locate, they're usually open for lunch when they do their most, their most business. So you don't have late nights, so that makes a good transition, right? BP probably works. And PO, or professional office, probably works. But we want to check those zones and make sure that they are not too high of an impact for a category that purports to be low impact. But it's a good category, and, and, and could be used, maybe it could be used even more than we're using it, on the backsides of commercial zones or something, those trans- transition, I don't know. But as a category, if we, if we leave it in place, I would suggest Madeline's comment about, does BP belong in it? Yeah, and it's probably, that's one of the things it does, prescribe those zones. The other thing it does is say, impacts to this, from this category, need to be limited, that's its point. So if the zones, if people are proposing changes to those zones, like people do with text amendments, let's say we leave BP in there and professional office in there, and someone comes along and says, hey, well, your professional office zone says I can't do more than two stories, I want to amend that, I want to text amendment that to say I can do four, because I want to do this particular project. As we review that text amendment proposal, we would review it against this, this general plan category and say, yeah, sorry, we're not gonna support that, because our category says it's supposed to be low impact, so we're not gonna go into our general plan. That is, in a nutshell, the purpose of a general plan. And if you keep that in mind, as we look at these categories, it doesn't really matter what we name them. Name them anything you want, try to make it indicative, sure, but you're gonna be using, you're gonna feel like you're repetitive, you're gonna say transition a lot, you're gonna say neighborhood more than you want, you're gonna say corridor, it's just the nature of the beast. You're not gonna like your names, you're gonna get finished with the names and hate it, like you named your children badly or something, you know? So there's nothing you can do about that. But if your stuff in it is good, you're gonna be okay.
You didn't have to go that far.
No, I really did. I did. You don't know yet, but I had to go that far.
And the Nexio building is, it's, it's kind of a good example, even on height, even though it's high, but it's not close to anything else to, to pose.
Has space around it?
It has so much space around it, so I don't, I don't think we're saying it doesn't have to be certain height in certain places, because a place like Nexio, if they want to build in a business park, and they want to come in and do like 10 stories like they have, or I don't know, six stories, it's a great spot for it.
Yeah, maybe that works.
So we don't want to eliminate Nexio by the freeway, across from Wells Park Stop, right next to the business park, it's in the business park. Yeah. So it's, it's in the business.
So that's the other thing we can look at, is in that business park zoning, does it allow for height if there's space around it? How does it handle that? And if it works, then?
It just says 48 feet max, I guess you're wondering.
Let's put a question mark by that one, and see if we need to.
But I think this is, goes to some of the bigger problems that we've had and that we keep identifying, because I think the PDs were used as end runs around a lot of this, for some of the office space, and so what do we want to see office space to be? Because we, I mean, even under commercial, we have office space, and we have office space needs, right? And that's different from retail needs, which is, and certain other types of commercial needs. And so, I think we acknowledge that there might be places where higher.
Density, or?
Density for, yeah, or higher rise.
Higher impact.
Higher impact. Business makes sense. Business.
Yeah, no, which is, just as we're facing in that, it was 850 East, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Few other accidents just happened in the last two months. The impact is also a big concern, because there, most of those accidents happened to my neighbor's kids.
Yeah.
There's a blind spot coming around Wells Park Stop, and the people making a lift out of that business park on 800 North. So I mean, conscious, we say to be or not to be traffic conscious, but density conscious, I guess, in the development.
Yeah, I don't like density, but like, we were talking about those kind of buildings, like, whatever we define.
The dense building.
Yes.
Obviously, their, their utilization is really low, like, they, they're not even utilizing the entire space, and we're still having issues.
Yeah. And I think there's, but I think there's also something to be said, what do we propose about that? What do we, as a city, say, this is what we want this intersection to be, this area to be, and then going to UDOT and saying, now fix it, because this is our plan?
I know.
But they're more likely to work with us if we have a plan, as opposed to just, it's land. But I'm just saying, like, as we're talking through this.
Fully built out, well, it's at least half built out, and the other half's about to go, and most of it will be nightly rentals.
Yeah.
And then the other part is long-term lease, no sales, so no, no affordability to new homeowners. But, and then that's an issue, too.
Yeah, but I'm just, but as we're planning that part, what are we going to say we want this land to be? Like, do we want it to be office stuff? Do we want it to be?
Business park.
Business retail, whatever.
With height limit, except for when it comes for variance, that a planning commission and city council can decide if it's appropriate or not.
Oh, that's a way to go.
Remember, you can do a lot of stuff with your zoning.
Yep.
But especially if your general plan designation says it ought to be considered. So that's something we could put in there. In this, in this kind of situation, hey, there might be, can, there might be, when we take, it should prescribe that we look at that business park zoning and a professional office zoning, and make sure that there are ways to do more intense development in that, where it's appropriate. But where this category gets laid, it's, it's, what did it say? Between collector and arterial roads and residential development. If we want to keep this as that kind of category, most of the time, those intensities aren't gonna be appropriate. It's kind of, it's kind of.
I'd rather see something more granular, rather than something that could be broadly implied. So like, you could say, well, we've had this discussion, 800 North, maybe more of a medical corridor.
Quarter.
Park, office parks, and medical corridor, and so you, you quantify, this is what we're looking for in this part, the big 100. Commercial down State Street, what do we want down University Parkway, you know, Center Street, so, because those are, you know, are four big arteries. And I would even say Center's really not, we don't want it to be a giant artery.
So breaking it down and saying, okay, this is low impact professional, and this is what we mean by low impact professional. This is higher dense, for lack of a word, higher impact, thank you. Higher impact, professional space, these are the circumstances we may consider it. And you could do that as an overlay, you could do that as, there's a lot of ways that it could be done, or actually zoned, say, you know what, we're right here by 16th North in the highway, and we already have several high-rise buildings, this area, we say, is okay. I'm using that as an example, I'm not insisting that that's what.
Just saying.
Yeah, that's not what I meant, like, but just as an example. So, and I think we li-, I guess that's, I would say that that is kind of something we value, is the ability to parse it down a little bit more and say, this is how we want this, this is where we want that.
So maybe we want a low impact professional services and a higher impact professional services. Or normal impact professional services, just professionals, professional services and low impact professional services.
That's what I mean.
Now that we have to create those definitions.
I get a little concerned, the general makes people come with big eyes, thinking candy store. And, you know, because it's just this big, broad thing, and so, they do, they go, oh, I'm just gonna push this and try and get this, because it's so broad of a statement that if we just say, you know, down this corridor, we're thinking this, we want low impact because of what's already in existence, the ability to handle traffic and all these things, and say, this is why we've said this corridor is meant to be this kind of thing at this point.
Okay. Makes sense.
So while it's a general, I, I think a little more granular would be more beneficial for the city and people coming to do development, so they'd understand that better, no, people don't have to parse it, figure it out.
And then, under professional services, we'd put things like medical and things. Gary?
Well, I was just going to suggest, maybe thinking about, you know, we have a general plan, but you do want to have some specificity in it, but to, often to get a lot of specificity, sometimes it can take longer. And one of the things might be with the general plan, is finding the balance between, okay, we want it general, but maybe identifying areas in the plan where we need to do a local area plan. And, and take the time, maybe in a certain corridor, a, a State Street, North State Street, you know, and identifying, okay, we've got a general plan, we have some things generally, but now, let's go in and really focus on perhaps important corridors, where we can spend more times and really get more granular. And then from that specific area plan, you can go in and make actual code changes.
Thank you, and that's, and I, yeah, I appreciate that. And that's where I say, what's our goal? Like, what, what do we value? What do we want to see here, like, with professional spaces? I go back to that question, just, and maybe it is that we just say we have higher and lower impact, and this is the general parameters between the two?
Yeah.
And then, Grant?
I was just gonna throw in there, too, with low impact, we talked about the neighborhood commercial, obviously, that would be very low impact as well. If that's another, if, if that's just absorbed into this low impact as maybe a subcategory of it, or in certain areas, it's this low impact neighborhood commercial, and then you have low impact commercial, professional services, and you have low, whatever we end up deciding the names are. But that's just, I'm just saying, that could be absorbed into that, because it is, obviously, by nature of the name, neighborhood commercial, what I would assume that is low impact.
And is that really how we want to parse them? Maybe we have low impact activities, we have medium impact activities, and we have high, and then we, it doesn't matter if it's commercial or business, or retail, well, retail's part of commercial, but, but breaking it down and saying, these are what it is. Do we like that sort of impact division between?
That's the bottom line, really, isn't it? I mean, low impact, high impact, medium impact. I guess, the challenge would be to define just what that means. I mean, that's very subjective, I suppose, but.
But from a starting point.
When we talked about neighborhood commercial, we were, it was, it was really, the discussions was always like, no impact, it's complementary usage. So things that, you know, it, it's not meant to draw people from all over the city to that spot, it's meant to people, draw people from the neighborhood, it's like a little community grocery store type thing, not, so, no impact, you know, maybe there's two or three people that drive, a lot of people walk, because it's so close, or convenient type thing.
And I would agree that that goes into low, and a low, medium, high, it's definitely on the low, you can, I don't think there's anything that you can put in that has zero impact.
Well, that's why I said, well.
Even a park will have impact.
What I mean is, it's like, you know, if I had a house there, it would also have a couple cars in front of it, and so that's why, no impact, because no matter what I put there, it's gonna have a similar, similar impact to the other things that go there. And so, I like more of a complementary type commercial, because that's an intent, complementary to the neighborhood, not to the business park type stuff.
Right, that's a, that's a good, that's a good way of thinking about it. The neighborhood commercial is something that you're, you're putting in place to serve the neighborhood there, it's something that people want to live near, as opposed to something that people put up living, you know?
Yeah.
Because it's drawing.
They get excited to maybe see something like that, rather than going, oh, no, go to the city council, tell them, don't do that.
Yeah, rather see, that's a good, that's a good way of thinking about it.
Yeah. But so taking a step back, how does everyone feel about kind of looking at these in terms of low impact, medium impact, and high impact?
I like that.
You like that? Clear, yeah, with clear definitions, yeah. But I mean, just for our own conversations to start saying, okay, do we see this as low, or high, or medium? Okay. Do we want to go back to the list, then? Just gonna look at the definitions really quick, and see if any of the commercial or regional ones said anything specific, but they don't. Like that, like the low impact part of it, so. But, sound like you had a thought?
No, I, I just, you know, I was just looking at things, I was thinking, I, you said something about, and I was thinking something else.
Well, and that's my other, I always go back to C1, does C1 even exist?
It is, we've.
We've found it.
Before.
We've found it, it's, but I mean, it's almost, if you look straight down our, there's only two minor differences between C1 and C2, in terms of, not what's in the category, but what's, have to find my other thing that says what's in the category.
I'd be really interested to see, you know, what usage in the C1, because we can see where it's at. Some banks, and some, let's see, medical offices, a jeweler.
Yeah, I can't even go through this and tell you what's permitted and what's not permitted in C1. It's.
I guess.
Minor differences to C2.
An element that we're really not considering, I suppose, is how much of a demand is there for these various types of businesses? Do we have sufficient capability to meet the public's needs?
That's a, that's a good question, and I can't, I can't answer that.
I'll be ready to answer that.
Just a quick scan on what the difference between C1 and C2 is, there's no, in C1, there is no transportation, communications, well, that's not true, there's some mixed, but there's a lot that are takeoff of communications and utilities. There's no wholesale and retail trade. Retail trade is not included in that, except for apparently medical cannabis pharmacies. Services then become mixed, like.
Ganja.
Yeah. Services become mixed, like, there's some permitted, some not, just depends on what it is. And that's, it's another big, long list of what's permitted and what's not permitted. You can't have art and music schools, but you can have driving schools. You can not have labor unions, but you can have business associations. I don't know who decided, like, there's no public assembly and amusements in that C1 category either, except for parks. And you can have orchards and undeveloped and unused lands, but you can't have horticultural services. So C1 is about as mixed as everything else is, so.
Hmm.
Do you expect anything different, Jerry? So. Jason, did you say something? Okay, bye.
No, no, it's, it's a big mess. Is there a possibility of having a different baseline that we can think about based on impact, like you said, impact?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing.
Amount of hours, amount of people, does it have to be just specific to services? Because obviously, services are all mixed and intermingled.
No, we, and we.
It's a new baseline.
A new baseline, and that's what we're trying to create. That's what we're trying to say, what's our brand new baseline? What do we want that to be? What are our values in that? What, what is our own value for each of these? And then, you're right, then we go back, like Gary was talking about, we go back and we look, and we say, okay, well, does it make sense to have these around here? How do we do our different impacts? So, good.
Yeah, like, right, right now, it might not matter, the C1 zone exists, and us not assigning it to anything, and if we don't assign C1 to any of the land use categories, it doesn't matter, it still exists. So it, we can assign it still and say, we, let's, I'm just spitballing three commercials, three commercial categories, a neighborhood commercial, a corridor commercial, and a regional commercial, or whatever. And maybe there's other, that doesn't mean there's no other commercial aspects to anything, there might be service-oriented things that are allowed in other areas, but then, that categories, those categories could also tell us to, like, like to Gary's point, look at these areas of this corridor and see if these are the right, if you have the right zones for this. Maybe you don't have a zone that's correct for this right now, where there need be modifications made, maybe C1 needs to be removed and, and gone forever, and then just re-categorized to something else. Maybe it doesn't, maybe it's, maybe it makes perfect sense, but we need to look at that in a more fine-grained way. We're not able to do that in the moment, but this, the, the general plan could tell us to do that. And the baseline could just be those things, those are really just intensities, neighborhood, corridor, and regional.
Yeah.
Low, medium, and high.
Well, and you can do the same thing, like you have here for professional services, where you say low impact is residential.
Yeah, residentially oriented.
Yeah.
In the neighborhood there.
And feeder streets, or, and then this is more tied around arterial and state highways, or whatever, like.
Sure.
Grant?
Or, we're not there yet, we'll get there with our economic, the goals that Madeline has put together from the economics, but, and Jim, to your question, just, you know, I think this is also responding to what businesses do we want to attract in the future to the city, like, we're going back to that 10, 20-year timeline here, what businesses do we want to attract, what businesses, obviously, we want to keep our core businesses in the city and keep them thriving as well. So, so I think that is also part of the connected, connectedness to this, this discussion as well, is, and as we get into the economics piece, we can do some analysis with some tools to find out, you know, what, you know, hey, for the population of our size, type of people we have, type of sectors we have, you know, existing businesses, oh, here's some adjacent magnet businesses that are complementary businesses for that type of sectors, right? And we can say, oh, we actually could use a few more businesses, because there's leakage, quote unquote, that is being parsed somewhere else. And so. And so we, we can use some tools, which is not there yet, as far as I think in, in that part of the chapter. So.
Hey, Sam.
This could be way out there, but can I get these two in digital format in addition to the city zoning map? Just digital format.
I'll. Which two are you looking at? Sorry.
So the, the.
Quick reference.
Digital format and then the, the city zoning map in detail.
We should be able to do that here.
Yeah, I will just, I know it could be crazy, but we'll, I'll put it in, in an AI agent and.
And then the other one was the comparisons between each of them.
I'll just upload all the data and see what.
See what comes out.
See what comes out.
Yeah. Should we use this as a segue into the economic portion? Or is there any more we want to? Cause I think, I think economics, and I'm going to say this, and because I've been looking at this a lot. Feeds into this as well, because I think the more I've looked at it, the more I'm like, what do we really want this? And that will, like he's talking about leakage, what are we missing? What areas are we missing? What are we not looking at? Those classifications will pull back in, I think somewhat.
What does the city lack? What do we lack in businesses?
We lack.
Now, I know that, that should be another.
No, it is.
Another part of the equation. As we say, we lack all the services. Here's all the land sizes, here are all the existing zones. Here the system parameters based on what we lack. What can we spread out as recommendation for zone changing based on the criteria of impact?
Absolutely.
And this first draft will not be pretty, but at least.
Yeah.
It's the, this has been a piecemeal system for, since its inception. And going back in a piecemeal system is, is complicated and then this could take us forever.
It could.
And whatever we do is not going to be perfect.
No. And I think that's where it comes again back to, let's pick some very specific overarching things. And then we work on filling in the details.
So do we, does the city know what we lack as a city in businesses? We don't collect enough data to know, do we?
No.
I mean, with specific to economic development, I, I, our economic development manager isn't here. So I, I definitely want to have her be part of that conversation. Cause she's more a steward and, and over that area specifically. And the previous economic development strategic plan, you know, that may, you know, have researched some of that. But just to clarify, you want me to, do we want to skip over the rest of the classifications for now?
Let's just go to economic, just for time and just to get it going and to get people thinking. So I went.
If you would like copies of the economic development plan, because we do have an adopted one.
Okay.
For, for the city that is currently the city's economic development roadmap of where we're, what we're doing and trying to accomplish. We can get that to you.
As a digital format as well.
And the what?
As a, in a digital format. Okay. It would be great to, maybe you, yeah, Madeline, you're onto something here with, with what we lack. To provide better services to the citizen and that, and that can play around zoning.
Yeah. So let me talk about what I did. So I went through, I went through what was in here in our general plan and I went through the strategic plan. And I tried to pull out everything that was still relevant. There's a lot in here and a lot, well, State Street master plan had, I don't know if you remember, we did it like, Hayson's the only one who's been on as long as I have. So, well, longer, you've been here longer. But we did the economic plan about three years ago. So I went through that and I started pulling and saying, okay, what goes together? And I kind of broke it out into three, um, areas. And so these are kind of, some of these are my words, but most of these are straight out of things that are in either the strategic plan or this. And I will tell you what for sure is mine. But basically it came down to developing and supporting existing businesses while expanding businesses and employment opportunities. Let's skip the small stuff and just go over what the big ones are. He flip. To be a sophisticated regional retail hub, because a lot of the other stuff came around, uh, us as a retail hub. We've always historically been that. It's shifted as other parts of the counties have developed, but what are we doing to maintain that? And then flip it again. This is the one I added and we can discuss it, but this is, this one's mine is to be an entertainment hub of Utah County. You want to talk about a place where we have probably a lot of leakage? That is one of them. And then built into that too, uh, is tourism. It's an area we, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what we're doing to attract it or where it's going, but that was something I identified as something we've talked on and off. In meetings in the past about, especially when we were talking about the mouth of the canyon area and what could be done. So, um, basically those are the three main areas. And then everything else, like I said, we're just taking things out of stuff. And putting together, and, and I did write that as family city USA, Orem should be a vibrant entertainment hub. With activities and experiences that appeal to a wide range of ages and interests to become the premier destination for entertainment in Utah County. It's just an idea and it's a place to start a conversation, but the more I was like, how many movie theaters do we have? And how many mini golf places do we have? And how many sports opportunities are there? How many things are there for us to do with our kids? How many bowling alleys? I mean, we're a city of a hundred thousand people and we have draws from how many other cities directly around us? Are people coming here to recreate? Are they coming here to recreate and stay and use our, use our mall? And use our, um, grocery stores? That's the word that's not coming to my head and other retail, other retail things. So just, I, I'm putting that one out as a thing to kind of talk about and kind of look into. But we can go back through them again. I just wanted you to just kind of see the whole kind of areas they broke down into. But with economics, it's kind of business and business development and what we do with the city there. And then retail and what's going on there. And then that, so. I still think we need a convention center as well. Me and I are in agreement on that one.
There isn't a good one in Utah County.
We also, no.
Provo has no parking. They don't have the space for a large venue.
But to have that, we also have to up our hotel. And we don't have hotels. We, I mean, we do have hotels, but we, but they're scattered across the city. We don't have a concentration of hotels to feed into a convention center. So how would we work that? But those are all conversations to have. Is that something that's a value? Would it be value to bring it in? We have front runner, we have UVX. How could those be utilized? How could, I mean, what would that create? What do we want along those lines? I think it goes to some of what we're talking about, about land use and business and classifications as well. But what kind of economics are we trying to bring into the city? What do we like to see? So. I know they're kind of dropping that on you and you kind of need to read it and look at it, but. Just explaining kind of what the background was on, on how I pulled this together and where it came from. But like I said, a lot of these things are straight out of the two plans. Some of them are a little redundant purposes discussion and to start discussion with these. So. What? I know. Start reading. And some of them are actually really, I was surprised how many of the things were along the lines of some of the things that we've talked about, but. About like the first one under business and employment established a revolving low interest, low fund for facade renovations and exterior improvements. For priorities located on State Street or corridor. Or consider funding and financial incentives for property owners to make exterior improvements. That came straight out of stuff we already have adopted. So.
So the question is if we've already adopted it, are we doing it well? And that, and we need to.
That's another.
Double down and, and, and yeah, find a way, find a way to do it.
Like I said, I was surprised at some of the things that were in there, but.
Yeah.
So economically, I mean.
Clearly your last, your last one, the arts, the entertainment hub, we're working on that. Art of downtown has a large cultural arts and entertainment component to it. That's moving, you know, moving along and you guys are aware of that. You've seen some of that plan and so that kind of fits in with that as well.
Down. It's under there.
Yeah.
So.
It's there.
And some of those actually did come out of things that were already there. I think the Orem, um, tourism board, I think that one was out of the strategic plan for the economics. So.
Wouldn't it be well to have the person that's responsible for the economic drive for the city participate in that discussion? To know just where we are and to have some ideas as to what.
Yeah, glad to invite her to, you want to continue this discussion next time? And we can invite her to, if she's available to participate in the work session.
Yeah. Would there be any particular questions you'd like to ask her in advance? I mean, that we could give to her so she could have prepared.
I think she would appreciate that. If you guys want to use this time to come up with things you'd like her to be able to speak to you about. That would probably make her, that would make her jump.
I think there is a number of questions. One is, where does she see our strengths? What are the obvious, uh, what businesses that we should pursue? What is she currently working on? I guess. You know, what, uh, what are we having success with right now? What, what's working for us now? Just pretty simple questions, I would think.
Okay.
Is that her sole job is just to go out and to, uh, build the economic basis of Orem?
She's also responsible for the business alliance, Orem Business Alliance. And if you have seen some of those business ribbon cuttings, when a business opens and there's a grand opening. She's very involved in, in coordinating with them early on. Uh, so that we can drop, you know, really get people excited and hear about the new businesses that are coming. And, and a myriad of other responsibilities as we've, have worked, have, you know, joint meetings and whatnot. So.
Matt was, Matt was just saying she manages business licensing as well.
Yes.
Okay. Quite a gig, as you can imagine.
Again, this, this section, the intent and the general plan of your economic section is not to necessarily establish. The detailed vision of the economic development for the city. Because we have a detailed plan that does that. It's to set out some really high level guiding principles. That when we do a detailed plan, that detailed plan is in alignment with those high level principles. And so I think it might help to read the plan, uh, the economic plan and have Kathy come in and we can talk about it. But with the general plan, we're not trying to, to redo a, an economic development plan.
I think that's a good distinction, especially because this is one, like unlike land use. We don't have a specific sub thing we adopt, but with economics we do.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and like the transportation master plan. We have a transportation master plan. We'll have, we'll have issues dealing with transportation in the general plan. But the general plan shouldn't be the master plan for transportation.
Right. Who wrote the, uh, who wrote the economic plan? The economic development plan? How was that crafted?
Our consultant was hired, came in, looked at things. And that, and that could be a discussion of, okay, how old is the plan?
Yeah.
Is it time to update the plan? Should we do, what type of conditions have changed? Those types of issues about changing conditions and all of that shouldn't prob, probably should not be in the general plan. But the general plan, uh, driving broad guidance and maybe making recommendations about further study. You know, same thing like, uh, you know, we have lots of different plans, a park master plan. We have, uh, water master plans, uh, you know, and again, we had that water element that came before you. We have to get in, uh, by the end of the year pursuant to state law. Well, that's based on all these plans we already have. So like 99% of it is based on those existing plans. So our water element should probably be fairly brief and refers to more detail in those plans. So just keep that in mind as we move along.
Madeline.
Thank you, Gary.
And, and Gary mentioned this, what time to update? We did catch Kathy before today's meeting, as we mentioned, we were going to just kind of be introducing the economics discussion that. We might be calling on her to be prepared. Um, and she did say this was, the previous plan was adopted in 2022. And typically she said standard practice is usually five to seven years. Uh, is kind of a timeline for updating that plan. And so she said, we're right, kind of right before that a little bit, you know, but we, we're still kind of in the middle.
Thank you. And I think as you read through the strategic plan, we've, they've got strengths, weaknesses, SWAT, SWAT thing in it. And there is some leakage, historic leakage, leakage stuff for our city in terms of retail. It's a little bit, the pandemic's shifted some things and it's a little bit older, but it does give you a general idea on some of these things. That, that we're talking about too. So as you look through that. Kind of be keeping some of those things in mind, but yeah, I think, I think that is about the introduction to economics that we can do today. But just to get it on your radar, start thinking about it. If you haven't read it in a while, read the.
And, and I'll just point out, um, all of you should have received emails notifying access to the Google Drive folder. And so by chapter, we have a draft for each chapter we agreed upon in the beginning. And so this economics text was pulled straight from what Madeline has added to that economics draft. So if you go there, you can refer to it. So you're not feeling like, oh, I don't know where to find it. That's where to find it. She has it in that Google doc, uh, Google doc. And you can refer to it there.
And again, this is just, I took what was there and made sense and tried to put it in a category. And for the sake of starting conversation, not, because this is the be all and end all of it. So. Should we go to the mapping for a few minutes and then, cause I think we need to excuse Commissioner Hawks right now.
Okay. Yeah, maybe it's a good point to take it, why don't we take a quick break? And everybody get a drink of water, whatever they need to, we'll go to, we'll set up for mapping.
Set up for that. Okay. Then we'll recess for a few minutes. Then we'll recess for a few minutes. Okay, we're going to start our, we're going to end our recess and we're going to start. So Matt, would you like to begin?
Yes, that, there we go. Okay, we're going to do a little exercise. And the point of the exercise is not to declare anything right or wrong or true or false, but to get the wheels turning and to sort of flesh out for each of you sort of what you just talked about for an hour. So I've just taken one section of the city because if you look at the whole map, it's just too much. I also chose an area that was just partly random, other than it had a lot of complexity on it. There's a lot of different types of areas, you know, HDR, MDR, the commercial zones, or not zones, I gotta be careful, we're not talking about zones. So what we're going to do is I handed you all a Sharpie. If you need a pen, I gave you a pen. The Sharpie works better on the color and allows you to draw big fat borders, okay? And then write down little notes as you have them. We're gonna, we all know this isn't the final thing with Grant Show tonight. It's the starting point, but let's pretend tonight this is the final thing, whether you love or hate it. Just, just for an academic exercise, this is Grant's land use classification page. Okay, just pretend it's gospel, not going to change, it's been canonized, and you have to apply it to the map. And now, we recognize this will probably change. It's not gospel, it's not canon, but for this exercise, that's what we're going to do. And the point of that is start looking at, huh, where would this go if we used it? What do I love about it? What do I hate about it? What's the pros and cons? Maybe it ought to be a little tweak this way or that way. That's the note section, right? And again, you can write on this, you can just keep it up here if you want. And then look at this map and say, okay, in 30 years, which of these land use designations should be realized? So we often fall in the trap of, well, we need to, we need to put the designation for what it looks like today. Now in 30 years, if it's supposed to look like what it looks like today, we'll then put down the existing land use designation or one that matches it. But if we say in 30 years, we imagine a change, hopefully to improve the community, then put a new land use designation there that would facilitate or help that be realized as things change and evolve in the city. Now, for one, this is just my personal preference. As I look at 1200 South, I would say, yeah, we got to keep that, that commercial corridor intact. It's part of our bread and butter. Well, I'm looking at, sorry, University Parkway to 1200 South. But my issue is actually 1200 South, right? If I was living in that neighborhood, I would be thinking, man, it'd be sure nice if there's a little bit of a, bit of a buffer between my neighborhood and the back of that strip mall or big box, right? Now again, maybe that's not your opinion. Personally, I would love that if I lived there. And so, you know, I would be saying, yeah, maybe our policy says that's a transitional commercial area or a transitional residential area. So we have in 30 years potentially, if it redevelops, a better buffer for the neighborhood. All right. Now again, not saying that's the right answer, could be the wrong answer. But that's the point of the exercise. How do we apply these theoretical draft things that could change to this map? So I'd like you to take 10, 15 minutes if you want. If you need more time, that's fine, you're, you're the chair. And just start drawing, talk to your neighbors if you want. And then at the end of that, we're going to come down, I'm going to pull out this bigger version. And we're just going to stand around and chat about what you came up with. And again, the whole point is just helping you identify what these things mean or if you don't like what they mean, how they ought to change and how they might be applied in a real life 30-year perspective. That make sense?
I think so.
Okay. So yeah, have fun, play SimCity basically. Okay, SimCity time. So I'll put a timer on my phone.
Thank you. All right. Do we need to leave our mics on or are we?
Start talking about what we were talking about. Come back.
It is a green space.
It's green space, okay. Yeah, I think it was.
Any other general comments before we just come around and stand around the table and look at it and share our thoughts?
I think we're fairly in agreement with some of the stuff we were thinking about, so we'll come down.
As you start applying these designations, what are some of the things that weren't working for you? Those are the negatives. What wasn't working for you as you tried to apply this designation?
I don't know if it's working or not working, but then looking at this and saying, okay, if this is our, if this is our real regional factor, what, what is here and how would we process it?
What would we like to see it be in 30 years?
And I never consider this because that's outside of our control anymore. They do whatever they want.
Sure.
Without regard, so.
So we gotta put something on the map. Because, and this is a point I don't think we've really driven home. These, this general plan map isn't just how we're going to use the land. It will, well, it is. But it will also start informing our master plan. Right? It will inform our water master plan, our sewer master plan, arcs, any capital needs, transportation. So it is more than just sort of a density or development exercise in that it will inform master plans and how they calculate future impacts and the capital needs we need to build. So even though we have no control, we do need a policy document saying what that is for all this other planning work that happens around us.
And I think we've talked about this just being a university.
Yeah.
And having some sort of designation. This is a university area and anything that area, right?
Yeah, Matt's, I think that Matt, that Matt's point. There's really saying, again, just to, one of the plans that we have as a cities and capital improvements plan, this does matter for that.
Which ultimately relates into capital budgets, capital planning, but also is really essential to inform our impact fee analysis. So we can't adopt impact fees without a master plan, like a water master plan, and they base it off this. So it's sort of a trickle down till we get.
This is where it starts.
Yeah.
So you, but you would see university going kind of in this whole area, maybe? And then, so the university as a category needs to include some, some separate disparate themes.
I'm gonna ask dumb question. What's that?
It's a church.
Oh, it's a church. Oh, it is. It is the church. No, I was thinking upside down. So, yeah.
This is a pocket of older homes or homes, and then we got.
There's some student apartments, yeah.
Yeah, so these are, I think, more garden court student housing.
They're falling down. My child had a stay in them a year.
Yeah.
I was like terrified for her.
Yeah, that used to be a, this is.
We are.
This is the student.
We are most interested in, in your feedback, but maybe we'll show you what Jared and I came up really quick. We'd never discussed this before. This was our just quick, you know, 10 minute exercise of our own. But I'm gonna show it to you, just sort of tell you, this is where we're looking, the type of feedback we're looking from you, right? So as I threw down, we threw down R, we started applying these designations. Now, some things really didn't change a lot in our exercise, these neighborhoods and res. Um, just basically your single family areas that we don't plan on seeing any change, or if there is development, we probably looking at single family development.
Is that neighborhood residential category? If we were doing for Matt's exercise, we're using the stuff.
Yeah, we're using that.
Neighborhood residential is rural residential or Nick, or it'll be R12, R8, R7.
Thinking the whole thing.
Yeah, we did the same.
Same, so what do you, what do you think in this line?
It looks like twin homes.
Yeah, I labeled that transitional mixed use, so.
We label like green.
Green space.
Buffer.
Yeah, but it makes sense.
Buffer, trying to change the character of the transition between.
Buffer housing, right there.
That whole line, do better.
Do like, yeah.
This is not bad. We, this is where it got messed up.
Yeah.
Here, is we allowed them to come on to 12th South and treat it as a commercial. Everywhere else, there's sidewalk, mow strip, green space, wall, alley, building. So there's a lot of buffer between the houses and those.
You're right. And so I suppose that's part of the definition. What, what do we mean by buffer?
Yes.
You know, is it just simply space? Or is it taking an aesthetic consideration or impacts like?
It's space and access to me.
Yeah.
Um, if you, if, as a commercials has access, it's no longer a residential space. There's no buffer between what's happening there and your house. So I think access to me is the biggest thing.
So again, we're destroying a neighbor.
Yeah, and so if.
With that one move.
Yeah, so if you, we had policies in place that said, no, 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 no.
Nope, we're gonna have.
You know, within 100 or 150 feet of the neighborhood, we have a different approach to buffer and enhance the neighborhood, whatever that is. You might have different visions about what the buffer means. For instance, I was thinking more like possibly townhomes attached to the back of a redeveloped strip mall, right? But if you're thinking maybe a greenway.
Oh.
Or, you know, Mike's thinking just, hey, we just gotta ensure there's space. I don't care if there's a wall there. Uh, we just need the space so, and not have semis accessing it. So we all have a little bit different take on what the buffer means. But we all sort of came to the same conclusion.
It needs to be.
We need policies in place that help us create a buffer, whatever that is.
So. One of our thoughts is they develop, redevelop this area here, big convention hotels.
Yeah.
With the green zone.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's interesting. It wasn't just we were all thinking it.
And sure, I think, like hotels.
Cause then it has the thing we've discussed, the university.
It goes to the freeway entrance.
Policy wise.
Nice prevention.
Fulfillment.
We use more viable as well.
So maybe we don't even, maybe there's not a land use category that needs to be there. An identification in the general plan and on the land map that says this area needs further studies and attract.
And then do this between.
Hotel.
Dining, hotels, convention.
Back to, and I was getting. That's what we were talking about, right? Like, if, if, if we want to say that our goal is to be attracting people into Orem, spend money to be here, to what? What are we putting? What is that? And what could bring that in?
That will be, no, let me just, that, that's a great, I love that. That makes the buffer 10 times more important, however, however the buffer in that area works.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're talking about hotels, you're talking about height and.
Yeah.
So it really needs to be done well.
And to have a pretty green space right along this little here as part of what they do.
The goal is to make all of them lovely.
There is a long, large sidewalk. Bar sidewalk, green space, and there's a wall.
In the wall.
That's, that's a good buffer for that residential area. Something similar by having convention, restaurants and hotel.
Yeah. But then the development needs to, like, the language needs to con, the language needs to prescribe that. The height is moved away from that and out toward the street, height toward the street, restaurants, wherever.
And, and that's right now.
Just gonna say, maybe like, kinda support, like, your tourism. Areas, you could identify, like, gateways into the city that you wanna focus on attraction. And maybe they have a overlay or something that adds a few extra things as far as like.
That's right.
Making sure we wanna preserve something or, or maybe a whole different zone.
If you're staying in a hotel, if they wanna use the BRT down to BYU, stay there for BYU, you have access if you wanna fly.
Yeah.
Self.
Well, I was gonna say, one of the things is we've got the.
I'm not dyslexic.
The. Problem where we have the big box in the back and all the parking in the front.
Mm-hmm.
And there's some level of.
University Parkway turns into thirteen hundred south.
Yeah.
Well, I saw this university.
Goes down here. Yeah, this is if we're looking, we're looking, there's a lamp.
Today, we typically have sort of.
But if they're along there, they're not blocking.
That type of situation. But if you're saying, that's a, that's a, a big box today that exists. But if you're saying just for, just for. Playing some city, if you really want a convention hotel. And we want a good buffer, right? Well, the policies could encourage and direct. And also help inform a future zoning, or maybe. You know, this is your intense use convention center.
The fun stuff.
Oh, sorry, I went too far. Hotel, convention center, hotel. And then here. Possibly a step down in the hotel. Or maybe another type of use like townhomes.
That's where you put all your parking.
See, and. Or, or.
Parking centers on the first.
But like, if you want a green space, then you increase the green space or, right? So again, eh, here's your single family home. Well, now line of sight.
They can still see.
You know, there's, and also impact, and then maybe you have policies about. You know, we don't have a lot of driveways and stuff off that.
We, we never sit down home.
Oh, no, this is just my concept.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, you could, you could.
Maybe a screen.
The community is supposed to be theaterism.
It's just.
I stayed up in Farmington, a bit. Similar thing that did all this.
Yeah.
Horrible. Traffic.
Station.
Parking, cars were everywhere.
Thank you.
Because they put the hound, townhomes on top of all this stuff.
Yeah.
And there was no room for, um, people who use the, the facilities, the hotels and other, were going into the neighborhoods for extra parking.
We'll just say it's still hotel. Again, it could be anything. The idea is that the intensity decreases.
Yes.
In a buffered way. That. Has less impact and improves possibly also the aesthetic and interaction between those two uses.
And, and as far as we can use for the convention will not be as heavy. We, behind it will have all the green park space and.
Yeah.
It's a good.
I don't know, like a.
These two guys have been getting.
How's that?
Yeah, not like.
Not hardcore, but we have, we've had extensive discussions about.
It's not primarily a convention center. I mean, it's obviously, it's office space, but they have large portions of it that they use for conventions when they fly people internationally. Um, but part of the accommodation for that is there's a huge green space in the back. And so most people, when they wanna go take their fun pictures of the temple or whatever, they can go. Into that big, like.
Yeah.
Parking area. And I know when I, when I worked at New Skin, it was used also by employees at the time. So it was used for barbecues. Um, we had people who would come and do wedding photos there because of just where it was located, right? Um, when convention centers would break, they'd come over and they'd set up and have picnics out in the area. Um, I mean, kids would get out of school and they'd come, they'd play soccer in the back. So you could. Easily say like, okay, maybe we've got. You know, this big convention center, we have the height requirement and we want. Um, that green space, but, but it's still something that obviously works for that convention center. But it's also kind of a semi-public use that allows.
That's kind of what we were talking about. Part of it. And also, if we had something like that here. UV would have access to it, but we were talking, somebody brought this up, this was not mine, but like, you know, they have a convention center here, well. What about attracting more concerts and having, we don't have concerts down here. Nobody comes down here to the valley to.
It would be nice.
Matchbox Twenty did about twenty-five years ago. That's the last one I can think of. But, um, like. But kind of. That idea too, of, of, we've got two universities. Make, what are we?
People who fly in for the games and this, you know.
Yeah.
If, uh. Use teams, soccer, whatever, get bigger, maybe have people coming.
And it's not far from the airport.
No. Yeah.
I, I do have a hard stop.
That's fine.
That's fine.
No, we can.
We're pretty much done. What I'd like to just hear is.
It's a story, it's almost a story.
Oh.
You have one.
You know. Has this been a valuable exercise and discussion?
It puts, it puts location to.
If we sort of take this approach to. Sort of. Different quadrants of the city. Yeah, each meeting, we just sort of do the same exercise. And then we capture sort of your comments. We try to. Synthesize what we think you want or you're thinking.
We're hearing.
We come back to you with a revised map, sort of using these general. Again, they can change. But, uh, at least get the discussion going. Oh, yeah, that really works out. Oh, no. You know what? Now we look at more of that, uh. Uh, but as we synthesize it down to these quadrants, it's gonna be a lot more digestible, the whole elephant, avenue elephant.
Well, that's what we said in the, in the first part, is we were talking about doing these corridors. North University Parkway, State Street, maybe breaking into two or three chunks, but.
We'll also help with, you know, if the city has any advanced knowledge from. The owners. What they're trying to do in the future.
Kathy's gonna be the rest one on that, I guess. Kathy will have the most.
With commercial.
Cause we, we know that most of. Whenever it comes down to Roth or Ross or Artizy Max or Burning Factory, that, those tend to die. They don't tend to live forever. It's just. We, we, you get to the point where you just call it quits. And this is a couple of. Areas that are always in here. We know the developers, they, they got the depreciation and they wanna create more depreciations. They, they wanna build something new. Do we have any advanced knowledge?
Aging, but again, I think Kathy's sort of the one that has her finger in all that.
Cause I, I know, I mean, I don't know who owns, is it Woodbury that owns these two?
Like this area, they came and talked to us a little bit ago.
Yeah, but nothing happened. What they wanted.
Yes. But we know they're, they're, they're thinking.
Yes, yeah. It's just owned by Woodbury as well.
I don't think they are. I think they're, um.
I, I don't think so either. I've never seen Woodbury's name on that. But, okay.
Well, thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll try and.
Thank you.
Take, synthesize some of these comments, come up with a revised map just for this area and, and just build off that discussion.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, uh, planning person, we'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six thirty-six P M.
Thanks, guys.
Get everyone's mini maps.
No, their question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
No.
Kind of what diminish.